I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is six o'clock and I call this meeting to order. Are there any agenda adjustments?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Before the Superintendent's Board Report, if we could include our student representative, Lindsay's report, please.
Any other updates or anything?
That's it.
Okay. Date time of our next meeting is Monday, February 20th at 6:00 PM. We do have our deliberative session Wednesday, right?
That's right.
This Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the high school. Moving on to the review and approval of the January 17 minutes, which we do have a quorum that was present, I believe, right? So those can be addressed. So Julie makes the motion and Mike seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to, where, I can't read sideways, public comment. There's nobody physically present here at the SAU building, but are there any callers on the line? Ms. Gray, could you help facilitate? No callers on the line. Okay. We will reserve the balance of public comment to the end of the meeting then. Moving right along to the board chair remarks. Just again, deliberative session is Wednesday. Encourage all my fellow citizens to attend if possible. Moving on to reports to the board, student rep Lindsay.
Nope.
No, thank you.
Absolutely.
With the dresses, I have a lot of dresses. You're looking for used dresses to donate?
Yes, as long as they're not damaged or anything, do not, then we'll take them.
And then we can drop them off at the high school?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Not to be left out, something that's maybe 37 years old, Lindsay, might that be not the appropriate venue for a prom dress that might be that old?
I don't know, vintage is 37, it might be back in style.
What was that thing you put under the dress that made it poop out all that much? What's that? Is that what that's called?
It's like a petticoat.
Petticoat, yeah.
Oh, petticoat.
Funny, very funny, very handy, yeah, okay.
She's talking about the 1880s, not the 1980s.
I actually just got rid of one last year when I emptied my mother's house. I couldn't believe she still had it, like, wow. Yeah, scary.
Hey, vintage is back.
My turn?
It is your turn, Dr. Martin, if you want to start.
Very good. Sorry, Lindsay, hope I didn't embarrass you. Good evening, everyone. Happy February, just FYI, we are celebrating Random Acts of Kindness Week next week here at the SAU. Careful if you stop by, you may get tagged that it might be your turn. It's kind of fun just to do something different around here, and you can imagine with the characters in our office, we've had some fun with it just talking about it. You can see what I've been doing in my board report, safety meeting, getting a little bit more involved with NHSAA, New Hampshire Supes Association, their Legislative Update Committee. It was very interesting to attend an event and also to facilitate part of the roundtable discussion. We are working hard on our mealtime negative accounts. The good news is, I think we've rectified all the technology issues with the automated emails going out to notify families of that negative balance. We have a very primitive warming shelter set up for BMS as needed. First responders in the community would be the ones to launch that, and we hope to do some more work with that with our safety committee. And you can see my goals at the bottom remain largely the same as last year so that we can continue the good work and try to get closer to the achievement levels that we're looking for. One other thing, I am involved with Dr. Ryan from Exeter, Dr. Cole from Ware, and a few other superintendents in reviewing what are called the ED306s, which are the public school approval standards. They're highly, it is a hot topic. Committee of educators have revised the ED306s. The group from the state board has revised them further, and now they're back in a committee of educators, and I have 147 pages of them on my desk. So we're going to be meeting a couple times before we actually go to the state board with some recommendations. And that concludes my report.
Does the board have any questions for Dr. Martin?
I saw at your retreat, you updated, you had the discussion on the legislative items that were going through Concord. I pieced in there, I think it was a good reminder, Dr. Martin, there was, when I went back to the legislative updates that we get, like, it reminds me again, we might want to find out how our reps are voting. There was HB 103, did you point it out, or that was another one that was?
I was into HB 106, I may have dropped HB 103. There are so many of them right now.
There's a lot. This one would disqualify people from, if you have immediate family working in the district, from serving on a board. So I was like, whoa, that's drastic, right? For small towns and stuff, that sounds drastic.
There are a number. Representative Lad, excuse me, Madam Chair, last week mentioned that there were 155 LSRS on his desk. An LSAR, by the way, can just be an idea. I would like this legislation to move forward, and then it has to be vetted by the researchers, Representative Lad's researchers, if he is in fact willing to bring that forward to the House. Same thing happens on the Senate side. So, yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, I know Barrett, Barrett's organization, Christina does a lot to organize that for us. But, yeah, it might be something we want to look into, it was a good reminder. Saw some of those ideas that are heading up to Concord, be interested to see how our representatives are voting, give them our opinions on that. So, thank you.
Not to get too sidetracked, but I read those updates too, and some of them are a little disturbing. Disturbing from the sense that that's the focus of our lawmakers, that they're almost pigeonholing these little things that they don't like about certain things and creating a law instead of fixing, we have big problems in this state, you know, so. I mean, I don't know how it works up in Concord, Tom might have a better idea, but...
I know you worry what goes in the Senate, because I think it goes through the House. That's all like garbage.
We are.
Anything, nothing down there.
Good to know. So don't get too concerned, okay.
Well, in House, education right now is 10 to 10, 10 Democrats and 10 Republicans, so it's going to be a challenge to bring people together to do good things.
Wonderful. So, any more questions for Dr. Martin before we move on? Moving on to Ms. Gray.
Hello, everybody. Just have a couple of things to mention from my report. One of my goals, or my own goal, is around instructional clarity, and that's really the work of having our teachers and students understand what we're learning and why we're learning it. It's a little more complex than that, but that's the gist of it. Some really good work is happening between the middle and high school. We had a couple of conversations last week related to some vertical conversations, and that's in an effort to kind of build from the bottom up and make sure that we're following a really concrete path for our kiddos. Professional Learning Day on the 13th went really well. We've added a new structure to the middle of the day that allows our teachers to have some choice. It brings in the work from the Wellness Committee, and folks essentially get to choose from a list of, I think we had seven or eight offerings this time. Some of them are more academic, and others were just fun with our colleagues and getting up and moving and enjoying some time together. All really good feedback from that structure, so I hope we can build it into most of our days, whenever the time allows it. And many thanks to our folks who donated time. In particular, we had Willow Tree Yoga Studios from New Ipswich donate an hour of their time, came in and spent time at the high school, and we had maybe 40 or so folks attend that event. So, very, very, very good time for everybody. And then finally, just assessment, it's that time of year again, state testing is coming. We're in the middle of NWEA currently. Families should be on the lookout for some state testing notices that'll come home shortly to give you the ins and outs, the dates, in the next couple of weeks. That's it for me.
Any questions for Ms. Gray?
No.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to high school principal, Dr. Porzelski.
So as you can see, January is very busy. We have our NIWA, Acadiants, and also our second quarter report cards. So it is a really busy time in elementary school, as well as snow days and just getting ready for 100th Day and Valentine's Day. There's just a lot happening. Our third grade did a really interesting project in which they always study American heroes, but as you can see, we're also talking about different character traits. Each month, we're introducing a different character trait through responsive classroom. And so one of the character traits we did was courage. What they did was they took the character trait of courage and then integrated it into their unit on studying American heroes, which is really wonderful to see that kind of interdisciplinary work there. Our second graders just did their animal habitat. I don't know if anybody, I just saw Dr. Martin there. Yes, he went great. It's amazing. I have not seen that before, obviously, so it was fabulous to see the work that was involved, and lots of students were dressed up as their animals, and it was really wonderful. And again, with those things, we look at it, we say, this is so cute, but the reality is it's also hitting major standards that are really important. So it has some science standards, and then also their ELA standards, they were breaking across digraphs and mapping, and it's quite phenomenal, what a good job the teachers are doing, kind of bringing everything in together. We have had staff members who are really excited about kind of taking the learning outside of just the classroom, so now we have somebody who has put up sight words all across the second floor, and so that as you are, or those are just kind of high-frequency words, irregular and regular high-frequency words, that students just generally, they just need to kind of memorize it. I don't know, the best practices are always changing if we memorize it, but we need to just know them, like the words the, he, or she, or it, or and, right? And so now they're all down the hallway, so that as students are walking down the hallway, they can make stops, and then they're color coordinated based off of their difficulty. But again, that's really exciting to see sort of different best practices kind of being expanded.
We have, our eighth grade is going to convale on next Wednesday, the 15th, to visit their CTE programs, to see what they're offered. So when they do get to the high school, hopefully they can gear towards something they're interested in. For sports, I have to update some of this. As of tonight, our boys just won. That's on the way here. I got the text message. They will play next Wednesday against Auburn, who was the number one seed, at 3:30. So they won tonight over Candia or Henry Moore, 39-31. Our girls did lose this past Friday in their quarterfinals. And the cheer team had a competition yesterday and they placed first over at Bishop Gerton. So overall, the season, as you can see, the girls were five and seven and the boys were eight and four, leading into the playoffs. The learning that's going on, our fifth graders just had a virtual field trip to Jamestown to visit the actual site. The archaeologist was there, as I said, in a field, but at the dig site. The students did ask if they could go there. I don't know if we're doing overnight field trips for fifth graders yet. So, but they're interested in going. School counseling department continues to run their groups, addressing social skills and anxiety, and their lunch group. Special ed department, they're applying what they're learning to students' goals with real-world math problems. And then Ms. Walter has a beta fish named Ninja that students are responsible for taking care of. So they're learning some life skills there, just taking care of other things. And Ms. Hill, during her RTI times, worked on some geometry and coordinating, coordinate mapping, real-world examples again. Same with seventh grade. And our eighth grade is working, starting during some of that time, with financial literacy, budgeting bills, and just financial sound decisions. So hopefully they don't spend all their money. Sixth grade, Ms. G B, Mrs. Griffinbells, her wing group has a shark tank and Ms. Ledger was doing blackout poetry, which I had to ask what that was because I had never heard of it. Apparently you take a page out of a book and blackout all the words except for the ones to make poetry, which was quite interesting for me to figure out. And then the seventh grade's doing genetics and hereditary. And then DNA in crime scene investigators, Ms., that's in our science class with Ms. Visa. And the eighth grade, Ms. Cohen is preparing the students for their DC trip, just what to expect when they go, what to pack, things of that nature. And then in math, they're doing the multi-step equations and slopes. Along with science, they're studying rocks and minerals and just finished their weather unit.
Any questions for Mr. Fondus? Tom?
From the sixth grade, I mean, they've read 760 books.
You should rephrase that, that doesn't mean you're a nerd. Question should be, why isn't there more seventh graders reading?
I asked the eighth grade.
No comments. Sorry.
Moving on to Hybridge Elementary, Ms. Coquillet.
Good evening. So as you can see, January is very busy. We have our NIWA, Acadians, and also our second quarter report cards. So it is a really busy time in elementary school, as well as snow days and just getting ready for 100th Day and Valentine's Day. There's just a lot happening. Our third grade did a really interesting project in which they always study American heroes. But as you can see, we're also talking about different character traits. Each month, we're introducing a different character trait through responsive classroom. And so one of the character traits we did was courage. What they did was they took the character trait of courage and then integrated it into their unit on studying American heroes, which is really wonderful to see, that kind of interdisciplinary work there. Our second graders just did their animal habitat. I don't know if anybody, I saw Dr. Martin there. Yes, he went great. It's amazing. I was, I have not seen that before, obviously. So it was fabulous to see the work that was involved. And lots of students were dressed up as their animals and it was really wonderful. And again, with those things, we look at it, we say, this is so cute. But the reality is, it's also hitting major standards that are really important. So it has some science standards and then also their ELA standards. They were breaking across diagrams and mapping. And it's quite phenomenal how, what a good job the teachers are doing, kind of bringing everything in together. We have had staff members who are really excited about kind of taking the learning outside of just the classroom. So now we have somebody who has put up sight words all across the second floor. And so that as you are, or those are just kind of high-frequency words, irregular and regular high-frequency words that students just generally, it's best, they just need to kind of memorize it. I don't know, the best practices are always changing if you memorize it, but we need to just know them, like the words the, he, or she, or it, or and, right? And so now they're all down the hallway so that as students are walking down the hallway, they can make stops and then they're color-coordinated based off of their difficulty. But again, that's really exciting to see sort of different best practices kind of being expanded across the school, which is really wonderful. We looked at our different assessments from January and I was speaking to Mrs. Gray about this. And so we decided to kind of look at our first grade. And we've changed some instructional delivery practices so that we're really kind of supporting our students, our teachers, excuse me, in strengthening this kind of engaging, small-group lesson plans. So thinking about, we can have some core, large, whole-group instructional time, but then also how can we break up that classroom during that period and really make sure that we're working and reading with our students in small groups, thinking about the different resources that we have available. So maybe it's simple as rolling out our letters with Play-Doh because that's hands-on, it's engaging, and it's something a little bit different than maybe just doing a sheet, right? Like kind of thinking about different ways. And I think it actually, it's fascinating to think about the things that Liz and Kevin are doing at their schools and then looking at how it's also in the elementary school. We're thinking about how can we increase our teacher's sort of, I would say, toolbox of expanding our best practices. So that's really exciting and I think the teachers are really excited about this. We are also going to convale on February 16th. The fourth graders are going to the ATC program. And convale is paying for the cost of the buses, just FYI, which is very nice of them. And I think the students are really excited. One of the things that a lot of our fourth graders were sort of robbed of the opportunity to go on field trips. So when Dr. Martin presented this, I know the teachers and the fourth graders were really excited because they haven't been on many recently. And then while this isn't really the most important information, Lori Costello won our first Golden Ladle competition on January 13th for her chicken gnash and spinach soup. I'm very proud of her. And then the other piece is that it's worth noting is that I made it a calculation error. So that while we are celebrating the 100th day of school on the 10th, it's actually the 99th day. But we have kindly worked together as a collaborative group to decide that we are going to celebrate the 100th day on Friday and it's going to be just 100 minus one day. So in case anybody... Just in case anybody is wondering. And then I'm not sure if people have been able to see our WHES monthly newscasts, but Lynn Tokla and Peter Mugsy Holmes were on the last one. And so if you guys would ever like to be interviewed for WHES, we would love, we would love any more volunteers to talk about their experiences with different character traits. Let me know.
Wait, wait, you were in a podcast?
Sixth grade, a nerd.
A nerd.
Recorded. Election.
The highly engaged students, right?
Highly engaged.
Yes. Oh, yah, yah. Should we have any questions for Principal Coquillet?
Well, thank you. Very good information.
Everyone sounds very busy between the three schools, that's...
Keeps them out of trouble.
True, but we also don't want to drive them into the looney bin. Aren't we all? So moving on, we have no unfinished business. We'll move right through to new business with the Promising Futures reallocation. Is that Dr. Martin or Ms. Gray?
Ms. Gray. So as you are aware, we were allocated a Promising Futures grant. It was just under $25,000, a few dollars below. And we had earmarked $10,000-plus for vape detectors. And given the nature of the grant as an exploratory grant, we had an opportunity to learn more and do better. And so with that, we would like to propose that we reallocate those funds for a different purpose. A committee has already been formed. We have met already once for that, for that work. And we will be meeting again next week to determine what would be the best use of that. We've put, you've heard tonight about Botvin, you've heard some life skill kinds of things, some work at Boynton already in that vein, Reality Check, nope. What am I thinking? All-Stars, All-Stars, and All-Stars boosters programs. We can bring some work perhaps down to Hybridge with some of these funds as well.
Madam Chair, thank you. If you recall, as I tell people, I spent some political capital on, with the board in having these conversations about the vape monitors when we talked about them this summer. And at the time, my experience was that I was receiving a number of calls from families saying that their kids were afraid to use the restroom. And I was very disturbed by that. I found it to be unacceptable. And we were grabbing for things that were going to improve the situation. Under Principal Pogo's leadership with her counseling staff, Mr. Pickering, and our social worker, what's been put in place is more of an awareness and a prevention plan, a coaching plan, supportive plan, where these complaints are non-existent, at least in my office. Now, that doesn't mean that the occasional vape kid doesn't pop into the bathroom and it's managed, it's managed at the high school with graduate interventions of discipline. At this, I was reluctant to say yes to this, to the reallocation of funds. But at this point, it does not appear that that is a need here any longer.
Are we looking for board action? Because it's difficult for the board to take action if we don't have specific as far as, are we adopting a new curriculum of sorts for programming with those monies? I think that should probably come to the board.
Agreed.
To reallocating, or is this just a heads up?
What we're looking for is permission to do the exploration. And then we'll come forward with a proposal for exactly what we would put that money towards.
Of course.
Well, I don't want Dr. Martin to take all this. I kind of pushed this a little bit to be totally open with everybody. I was really nervous going up to the high school, hearing that this was a really big problem. And I think kind of grasping at any lifeline that I could get. And in a lot of ways, I feel like it has been a bit of a blessing that the way that things work, that they just didn't get ordered, you know? It didn't happen until, and we started evaluating like, where are we? And is this actually going to hurt or is this going to, could it help or could it hurt? Or could the money be better spent, you know, doing something else? We still have students who are vaping. We are always going to have students that are vaping. But I think that, again, we're really working with the freshmen right now on this program. We have been working with families, parents, our social worker has been absolutely, I can't even talk about how valuable she's been as far as hooking up our families with resources, with resources for help. You know, and I think that's where this grant really is pushing for. It's preventative and help rather than punitive. We had a plan to use the detectors in a non-puritan way, but again, that also stemmed from fear on my part. So I'm not as fearful anymore.
Well, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, of course. But I don't view this as a negative thing where you're asking for us to... I mean, that's good, you're reassessing and there's flexibility and you're trying to put the money where it could do its best. So I mean, there's no fault in that whatsoever. I would entertain a motion to give our consent or blessing or whatever you want to say to exploring the ideas of reallocating that money.
I'll make that motion.
Superintendent, is this question?
Yeah, I mean, I don't even think we need a motion to do that. But if Dr. Martin feels most comfortable, I have no problem us doing that.
Well, I mean, I know you're in the middle of a motion. We'll come back to you with whatever it is that we're going to do.
Okay. So I withdraw my motion. I think that's the proper procedure. Someone please help me because Robert Rules of Order is not my strong point. So I'll withdraw that and we'll await the wonderful plans that will be presented to us.
Still reflecting and reassessing this. Like the chair said, this is a fine, fine path. It's a good new story if there's less fear, nothing, healthy fear, whatever you call it. But if there's less of it now, that could be a good sign too.
Just wanted to double up on the social work I am. I was literally in the room, in her office, and I've seen her over at the high school as well. She's pretty busy, she's all over the place. And I've seen her at events, some of the events.
Good job.
It's good to hear. I've heard nothing but positive, so it's great. Oh, ooh, snow day learning packets. Dr. Martin, is that your specialty?
It is. But I will say that Ms. Gray put together the memo that you have in front of you and we also have these conversations with our principals. So we had an error in the calendar this year. We only have four snow days in the calendar. We have one left and we're preparing in case we are to have other inclement weather. I think it was Dr. Pogo's idea to call this a snow day learning packet as opposed to a blizzard bag or remote learning. Remote learning kind of gives people a twitch, a little bit of rash and everything else, right? Makes them jitter in their chair. So this is the point of this. We, this is right now, we're looking at this for the rest of this year. Next year, we'll have our five snow days, regular, plaino snow days, with the opportunity for this snow day learning proposal if needed, okay? No one will say these are the ideal learning days. But as I've listened to my peers this year talk about the effectiveness of having these, it's reinforcing activities for students, it's continuation of learning experiences, it's things that they're familiar with doing. And I threw in a couple of the elementary ideas that Principal Coquillet's staff had put together. There will be some accountability from a grading standpoint and we will ensure that all of our staff will be accountable for time. We're looking for your permission to move this forward. Staff are ready to distribute materials. And it would be largely built on a, not having any technology in front of you. So tomorrow, most likely, if the board approves this, learning packets will head home for students, kind of like a teacher's sub-packet, right? When I was a teacher, I had a sub-tub, it was a little tub, submarine on it, sub-tub. Anyway, a sub-tub. And I had a variety of activities in it that you could do at any point in time that had some meaning in the classroom if I were to be out in an emergency situation, okay? Same kind of thing, we'll go home with kids. And let's hope we have a very mild and cooperative rest of February, March, and we won't need them. I won't read the memo, you have it right in front of you. Principals are here to answer any questions you might have. Yes, madam?
I collected more today. I don't know if the board will want to see other examples or from other grades or if I can do that because it's too late.
Well, it's never too late, but let's see what the board has for questions first.
Okay.
Tom? Well, read your eyes by now, we've worked together long enough. Questions?
Well, you know, I'm not crazy about it, but you know, as I said in the past, but I'm happy to use it, you know, if we have to.
Yeah. I mean, the alternative is we add days to the end of the school year. And I know that's not popular because a lot of families have already made plans or, you know, childcare, day camp and stuff like that. I think that's tricky too, unless we can avoid it, you know?
Yeah, we're not going to have four of these days.
Well, let's hope not.
I'll say a rosary.
The winter is still young.
Yeah, I'll say a rosary.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
No, it's very important, you know? Like I said, the opposite is important in our district for, you know, June timeframe. So if this goes away from running it and the accountability is not only on the staff, as Dr. Martin pointed out, but it's, you know, if the accountability is not there on 90% of the students or something crazy like that, then it's like, okay, if something's not working, then we extend the school year, you know? So part of choices in life, right? So I think it's a good option to give us.
Julie?
No issues.
You know, Dr. Martin first brought it to me, I kind of cringed. Just because you have concern about the engagement of students. Are they going to blow it off? You know, is it really just, you know, and maybe perhaps knowing my own student's experience, you know, is he going to be able to even find those papers that he allegedly never got? You know?
Similar.
What doesn't kill you makes you stronger, right?
There you go, there you go. And I think, you know, Madam Chair, if I may just jump into this, we're going to look at this and like everything else that we do, we'll launch what we think works well, we'll examine it, we'll refine it, make it better going forward. But I think there are some interesting ideas out there provided by staff.
Yeah, I mean, all the elementary examples we got, I was pretty impressed with. I think they're all cute and engaging and, you know, I can see kids wanting to do these activities. It's the older kids that I have concern with, you know, as far as, well, it's a snow day, I'm not going to do anything. So, but I mean, if there's, you know, some sort of consequence, that's good. And I trust that our teachers and our administrators are on the page. And it's better than extending the school year. So I would entertain a motion to approve this, is it snow day packet?
Snow day learning packets.
Plan.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
So Tom makes the motion, Mike seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We have no policies, but we do have a personnel report. Dr. Martin, do you want to speak on any of those?
Madam Chair, they're all pretty straightforward here. We present this to the board as listed. Oh, and if anybody knows, we're looking for a baseball coach at Boynton and at Messina Regional High School. We need softball coach at Messina Regional, volleyball coach at Messina Regional High School. We will message that again next week in our messaging.
I think Tom has lots of spare time on his hands.
Exactly.
You're retired now, right? Are you thinking the same thing?
I was going to just play.
You're so good at it.
Oh, yeah. I'll switch it, yeah, he needs good people. I could be retired.
Busy tomorrow, Saturday, and then Sunday's the next day.
I know. You have my sympathy.
But let's all try to spread the word. If, you know, someone pops in your mind, oh, they would be a good pick. So we have a personnel report. I think that includes, what, three new hires and one resignation with regret?
It's actually two hires, a transfer, and one resignation with regret.
So entertain a motion to approve that personnel report.
I'll make the motion to approve the, wait, on the personnel report. Julie seconded it.
So Tom makes the motion and Julie seconds it. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Any agenda-building topics?
Pass on that this week, Madam Chair.
Any final public comment? Ms. Gray, do we have any callers that have joined us since the start of the meeting? I had no callers. How unusual. So I guess that would conclude our public comments. Moving on, we do have a short non-public, and that's under RSA, or I'd entertain a motion to enter non-public under RSA 91-8:32 under, I would say it's A and C.
A one.
A and C. Compensation.
I'll second it.
So Julie makes the motion, Mike seconds it. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Rachel, yes, motion passes. We'll short recess and reconvene. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would have forgotten.